Let me get everything done. Jody, if you'd close that door, please.
Sure.
All right, well, good morning. I want to welcome everyone to Commissioner's Court. Before we get started, we're very glad to have with us for the first time in a while, Mr. Brother, I've Joe Givens. He will lead us in the invocation and Commissioner McCam, the pledges. It's good to see you, sir.
It's good to be up. Bye. Heavenly Father, thanking you today that you're merciful and a kind God, that you make a way for us when we don't see our way. Now as Commissioner's Court begins, Lord, I just want to thank you for blessing me to be here. Ask you to bless the Commissioners' Court, County Judges and Commissioners and all the people that work to make this Commissioners' Court function as it should. Bless the Sheriff's Department and all the first responders. Your need is great at such a time as this in the decisions made for the best of your people. In Jesus' name, I pray and ask these blessings upon the court and your people. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Brother Givens, thank you, sir, very much. And it is, it's good to see you up and going.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a quorum, so we will call this meeting of Commissioners' Court to order at 9:02. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court held on April the 19th, 2022. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing none, Judge, I move we approve the Commissioner's Court regular session April 19th, 2022 minutes as presented.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the Commissioners' Court's minutes from April the 19th, 2022 as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. And number two is consider and take action to proclaim May 4th, 2022 as firefighter appreciation today. And with us, we have Mr. Bill Sickel with us. It has a proclamation.
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
I am Bill Sickel, and I represent the Athens Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution. We have a saying that goes like this. We honor our patriot ancestors by recognizing today's patriots and heroes. And that's what we're doing here today. We're here to recognize the firefighters of Henderson County. Firefighting and the need for firefighters can be traced back hundreds of years from the very birth of our nation, actually. So I brought along a list of famous and infamous Americans who served as volunteer firefighters. See how many you can recognize. George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Benjamin Franklin, Samuel Adams, John Hancock, Paul Revere, Alexander Hamilton, John Jay, John Barry, Aaron Burr, Benedict Arnold, James Buchanan, and Millard Fillmore all served as volunteer firemen. The first recorded female volunteer was a Molly Williams, a black woman and slave who fought fires wearing a calico dress and checkered apron back in 1818 in the city of New York. In 1820, Mariana Bette served as a volunteer in Pittsburgh and claimed she never missed an alarm during her 10 years as a firefighter and became famous for dumping buckets of water over male bystanders who refused to help fight the fires. Lily Hitchcock, a resident of San Francisco, was America's most famous female firefighter. According to account, one day on the way to a fire, there were not enough men to properly pull the engine for Knickerbocker Engine Company Number Five. And not only that, but they were being passed by other engines enwrapped to that fire. And you can imagine the humiliating remarks that were sent their way. Fifteen-year-old Lily saw their plight and dashed to the vacant spot on the road, and she manned that road for another 10 years. Before 1850, no city in the United States had fully paid, full-time firefighters. Volunteer firefighters played and continue to play an invaluable role in protecting lives and property. I am the son of a professional firefighter, and I can tell you from a very close perspective that it takes a very special person to put on a suit that can withstand 2,200 degrees and go to work. With your permission, I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation.
Please.
Whereas brave firefighters all across Henderson County protect the life and property of our residents through fire response, medical emergencies, fire prevention, code enforcement, and public fire safety education. And whereas firefighters must retain their composure in a variety of emergency situations while fulfilling requirements before the task at hand, no matter how routine, complex, or dangerous. And whereas many firefighters extend their training especially areas to serve as members of ASMAT, rope rescue, or swiftwater rescue teams. And whereas firefighters bravely face possible injury and death in the performance of their duties, working long, strenuous hours to safeguard the lives and property of the citizens and visitors of Henderson County. And whereas May 4th is observed around the world as firefighter day. Now therefore, the Henderson County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2022 as firefighter appreciation day in Henderson County, Texas, and call for all citizens to join the Sons of the American Revolution and extend their appreciation to those dedicated and brave enough to don the equipment.
Mr. Sickel, thank you very much. The information, the anecdotal information that you bring to us with these is strong tradition with those that have been before you here. We really appreciate that history because it does, it gives context to what today is. And we thank you very much. Court, comments?
I'd like to say thank you to all the firefighters that, especially the volunteer firefighters that take of their time and their family's time to go out and protect us whenever it's needed. Two weeks ago, we had a storm down on Lake Palestine and this brings to light, you know, those guys were up all around, trees down in people's yards, trees down on people's houses. A lot of times a thankless job. We don't even, we don't think about them until we need them. And, but they're spending a lot of time away from their home and away from their family and volunteering to do this for us. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to the volunteers. They do a lot of hard work. A lot of times we don't realize what they do, you know, call of duty at night and stuff like that. And I didn't realize how many calls they had until we started having the Fire Marshal send out a weekly report on grass fires and structure fires. And you wouldn't believe how many calls they have during the week.
I'd like to say thank you also, and also not just fires, but wrecks or somebody that got hurt. The firemen are usually the first ones there, and I'd like to appreciate, say thank you.
Well, my family has, has fire, the fire industry in them, and so we see it every day, but you hope that when they leave, they come home. But our volunteers do, they, they answer a lot of calls to, and it's one of those deals that's kind of like a mechanic. You don't want one until you need one. And when you need a fireman, our emergency response, you need them wrapped in. So hats off to our volunteers and all our first responders in our county. And thank you for bringing it to light to us today and for May 4th.
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the resolution proclaiming May the 4th, 2022 as firefighter appreciation day in Henderson County. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Item number three is consider and take action on a resolution to approve the allocation of the county's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for loss revenue. We have Ms. Brown with us today.
Good morning. Henderson County has been awarded $16 million, $70,692 in coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Of that money, we are able to allocate $10 million to revenue loss. And in order to do so, I had to bring this resolution before y'all for approval. It will require signatures of the entire court.
Questions for Ms. Brown? This is a part of that process that's been laid out in the numerous guides from the Treasury and at the behest of our coordinator, Trailer and Associates, that's assisting us in the administration of this grant funding. And this is the required steps or step one as far as having it allocated for the proper purposes. Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner McCam to approve, to approve the resolution on the allocation of the county's coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for loss revenue. All those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And item four is consider and take action on an interlocal agreement with Montgomery County for the detention of juvenile offenders. In court, in the backup, you have the interlocal agreement. There's Mr. Niffson. Blue, if you would, please come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you, if you would.
So it's becoming increasingly difficult to find beds for our juvenile offenders. And I was reached out to Montgomery County because I thought I would be in need of this particular facility to house our offenders because we couldn't locate a bed. But I was able to locate a bed in our region. Long story short, I would like to have them on backup. Normally, you don't see these types of contracts, but the way this one is styled, it required it be brought before Commissioners' Court and the Juvenile Board. The Juvenile Board has approved, the chairman of the Juvenile Board, Clint Davis, has already signed, and we're requesting the county judge's signature via Commissioners' Court approval for this detention contract.
Any questions, comments?
What do we have most about juvenile?
Well, currently, we house them in Van Zandt County and Gregg County, but it's getting more difficult. Smith County has not opened back up since the pandemic. That took a big hit on our beds because we were using them quite frequently, and it doesn't appear that they plan on opening up anytime soon to outside contracts. We also have contracts in Grayson County, Hayes County, Harrison County. I hate to do it, but I'm about to reach out to Lubbock County. So we have quite a few contracts just in case we get in a bind and need a bed, which happens quite often.
And as Mr. Niffson said, the, the demand has increased and supply has decreased, and this is because of what we've had with the coronavirus pandemic. Those that have offered the services, as he stated, like Smith County, who we try to keep them as local as we can, have not reopened, therefore causing for the need to have these additional spaces available in case we do. Any other questions or comments?
How many beds are, are we going to be underneath a, like a five-bed minimum, or?
No, sir, there's no minimum. It's just based on availability. So even though we entered this contract with Montgomery County, if we don't put a juvenile there, they don't charge us.
Okay.
But there's no guarantee the bed will be available.
Right. Yeah.
Any other comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So move.
Judges.
With the judge's authorization to sign.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the interlocal agreement with Montgomery County for the housing of juvenile offenders with the judge's authorization to sign. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And forgive me just a moment because I clicked on the wrong button. I have to click several buttons. Okay, now I got it back up. Item number five, consider and take action to appoint Ronnie Gold to Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Commissioners for an unexpired term to end on December 31, 2023, located in Precinct 2. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, we found a needle in a haystack. It's one of those where they want to be on the ESD board. So Rick Purcelli had declined to be reappointed, and Mr. Gold reached out to me about being on the ESD board, and he has met with the board, and they are ready to move forward. So his backup documentation is behind there, and he is, he's ready to go.
Questions for the Commissioner? Entertain a motion.
Judge, I move we appoint Ronnie Gold to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Commissioners for a term to expire December 31st, 2023.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to appoint Ronnie Gold to the Emergency Service District Number 10 Board of Commissioners for an unexpired term to end on December 31, 2023, located in Precinct 2. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously.
Thanks, Court.
Item number six is receive financial reports, and there are none. Item number seven is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets, of which there are none. Item eight is consider and take action on submitted contracts. None are presented today. Number nine is consider and take action on request of right-of-way permits.
No permits.
No permits. And item 10 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. And we have Ms. McCollum with us here today.
Yes, we have some budget amendments, and they're for the 2023 budget, and they're to burn the bridge. And I believe y'all have a copy of that. Do you have any questions?
Questions concerning the amendments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment. I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the budget amendments as submitted. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item number 11 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir, we have one set. We have fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $217,464.93.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
Yeah, I just want to make sure the bill that we canceled yesterday, it wasn't in these bills. Okay. I have no other questions, Judge.
Okay. Commissioner McCam?
I have no question.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the fiscal year 2022 bills in the amount of $217,464.93. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted plaits. Item 13 is open and consider bids. We do have one today.
Yes, Court, I needed to see if I could get authorization to release a request for proposals for surveillance and security systems. It's a request for proposals, including letters of interest and statement of qualifications for companies who would like to submit proposals on any upgrades, updates, or replacements for surveillance and security systems for county facilities.
Questions?
When are we going to send this out?
It'll be, if approved, it'll be posted later today, at the latest tomorrow, and then the ads will be posted in the paper Saturday, the 30th, and on May 7th. And then we'll do the opening on June 6th. In between there, we'll also have a meeting on May 16th and a walk-through of the facilities.
And that's one of the reasons for the, the four-week opening in this is to allow for that opportunity for the meeting and for the preparation of responses. Any questions? Hearing no questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to go out for RFP for surveillance and security systems for county buildings.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCam to approve the release of an RFP for the surveillance and security systems. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes unanimously. Item 14 is to convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, regarding personnel matters, namely, review and discussion of applications for the county veteran service officer position. Can we get a motion to move into executive session?
So moved at 9:40.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey to move into executive session at 9:40. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. We will recess until 9:40 in executive session. Thank you very much for being here. We do have a workshop following this meeting, so if anyone wishes to hang around, please feel free to do so. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay. Item 15 is to reconvene into executive session. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to reconvene at 9:52, regular session.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Tulley, to reconvene into open session at 9:52. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes unanimously. The action item is consider and take action on matters discussed in executive session. Again, we discuss the veteran service officer's position, of which we got four applications through the extended opening, and we're going to be interviewing those individuals in the coming days. So there is no actual action to take at this point. So we'll move to item 16, which is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Richardson, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. We stand adjourned.